I will call the meeting of the regular session of Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Leyland?
Here.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Dralka?
Here.
We will now have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion to receive the agenda as proposed or amended.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Public comments, do we have anybody in the boardroom that would like to provide public We have nobody in the boardroom, do we have anybody on Zoom or online that would like to provide public comment? We have no one, claims and payments, Mr. Perry.
Good morning. The total expenditure for this week is $468,115.35. The larger department Secondary Road, $79,477. Sheriff's Department, $36,465. Maintenance Department, $52,011. And finally Conservation, $33,143. Everything looked normal.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Perry? I will make a motion that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
Second.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Dralka?
Yes.
Project updates from department heads, elected officials, Kathy?
Good morning, Board, Kathy Nicholas.
Morning.
Good morning. Quick update on project work. PCI is continuing to work on Grundy Road, that ground project, they're making good progress on the very south edge, southern edge of the project this week. Over on Cedar Wobbsie River Bridge, they are, PCI is nearing completion of that project. They, we're hoping, hopeful that by the end of next week, they'll be, it'll be substantially complete and we'll just have a punch list to work on. They've been spreading topsoil on the north portion of the roadway in particular, or north of the roadway. And working on the parking areas for the conservation boat ramp area and the bollards still need to be set, but we're hopeful that they are getting close now to finishing. Rory just informed me that the solar panels at the, at now, the complete solar panels on, at our buildings at the Longfellow shop, that those are ready to be turned on so that they are, those are finished now according to Rory. And then lastly, I mentioned to you during budget time that we, that my department, we were working on a customer survey that we wanted to get out yet this fiscal year. We are just about ready to send that out and I'll be giving you a bit more information on that probably next week or the following week when we do send it out. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
No.
Thank you.
Amanda?
Morning.
Good morning.
Nina Fezemeyer, HR Director. Just wanted to again communicate out that we have the Black Hawk County Employee COVID-19 Vaccine Clinic set up for Friday, the 23rd. We've been sending out information to employees and departments, so just wanted to remind everyone of that. Any employees that are interested in participating, we do need that consent form to be completed and returned to our office by noon tomorrow. So, and then also just a reminder that we are getting ready for open enrollment, so any employees or retiree participants that are on our plans, health insurance, dental vision and wanting to make changes, that'll be taking place on May 1st, well, May 3rd, I suppose. So, just wanted to put those reminders out there. Any questions?
Where's the vaccination clinic?
So, the location depends on the number of people that actually sign up and I can let Nafisa speak to a little bit more about that, but right now we're tentatively looking at the basement conference room here in the courthouse, otherwise the chapel in the Health Department, but we'd like it to be housed here since most employees here probably have not been actually vaccinated as required by their job. So, yeah, we're hoping for here in the basement, but we just have to, they have to get the numbers to evaluate if that's suitable.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department head or elected official in the boardroom that would like to give an update? Anyone on Zoom?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, this is Dr. Boigny, Black Hawk County Health Department. So, just really brief update, we continue to vaccinate, to set up key targeted vaccinations clinics throughout the county. We have a vaccine clinic this upcoming weekend on April 24th and 25th at the Cattle Congress. We have been struggling a little bit for, in terms of filling those slots. We're seeing vaccine hesitancy throughout the state and so we're trying to better understand the situation, whether it's, you know, we've really vaccinated the majority of the individuals that wanted the vaccine, or, you know, what's, what's causing the hesitation. And so, we continue to do education, very targeted outreach, and we're, we're gonna try our best to get more people vaccinated throughout the weekend on the 24th and 25th. Our goal for those two days was to vaccinate about 1,000 people, but right now, again, we're struggling to fill those, those slots. So, so that's where we're at and as Amanda stated, for, in terms of determining the location, we're, we're gonna wait until we get the, to have a better understanding of the number of people interested in getting vaccinated and then that will determine where, where we do it. So, the number drives some of the logistics and so we will do our best to inform department heads and staff on where, where they'll need to go. So, that's the update that I have for you all. The state is seeing counties returning vaccines and so when, when they, when they do get those vaccines returned, they usually reach out to, to other counties to see if, if they're in need. So far, right now, we, we are, our demand for vaccines seems to be less than our supply. So, anybody really that wants a shot can get it absolutely anywhere right now, whether it's with the pharmacies, the healthcare providers, or Black Hawk County Public Health. There are open, open slots for vaccines, so please continue to encourage people to, to get their vaccines. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Nafisa, is most of the employees out at Pinecrest vaccinated or not?
Like, when you mean employees, are you talking about Health Department employees?
We're talking about the whole thing, every employee out there, our employees, county employees.
County, okay, the, the Health Department employees, the, the majority have been vaccinated and other departments within Pinecrest, this would be the time for them to also sign, to sign up if they're interested in getting vaccinated for this upcoming clinic.
So, would it be impossible to have a clinic set up here and out at Pinecrest rather than having people from the courthouse have to run all the way out to Pinecrest to get their shot?
Yes, we, so we will look at those logistics once we get the number and determine where those, where the individuals are located. Yeah, so we do our best to make it like a very smooth process even for the employee. It's just, we, we, once we get that data, we can, we can definitely look at that and then determine, because we, we do wanna meet our employees where they're at, especially so that, you know, when it comes time for the second dose, they're able to, to just, you know, whether it's here in Pinecrest, they come up and get it, or somewhere else. It's just that when you open that file, it's, it's a numbers game and so we wanna be careful with that.
Nafisa, I had a question also. You mentioned now anyone can get a vaccination now, so you're meaning any age, would contact their drugstore or doctor's office or similar to set something up?
Yeah. Absolutely, we, yeah.
Okay, I was just wanting to be clear, I know that was, that process for some signing up was, you know, rather difficult to make an appointment, so it sounds like maybe that would have eased up a little bit?
Yes, absolutely. Like I said, our, right now, we're, we have enough vaccines, you know, and so, I, I just, I'm, I'm just encouraging people and, you know, if we need more, the state is eager to give us more, but as long as we have that 80% throughput, it's, it's, we're, we're also being very careful about not just asking for more and, and we're not needing that, right? So, and the state did inform us that they're, you know, gonna work on some of that, those logistics, because now it's, it's, it's really, we're at a point where it's about patience, you know, and, and just doing more education so that individuals that are hesitant, you know, when they're ready, they have access to the vaccine. We've, we're gonna be launching a campaign here soon about, you know, people that have gotten vaccinated to be able to share this, the facts with the, you know, with the community. So, and, and we're going to the people, you know, the same way we're, we're gonna try and set up at the, at the county, at the, in the basement, we're also going to the people in, in the communities and so, but it's just that we have to make sure that once we, we start vaccinating that, you know, there's no dose that's being disposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yolando, it looks like you're getting ready to say something.
Good morning, Board, this is Yolando.
Good morning.
Black Hawk County Veterans Affairs Office. I just wanted to kind of report that of my four employees, three of us are fully vaccinated and the fourth has her first shot last week and so our office should be fully vaccinated by May 6th in that standpoint. The other thing, and I kinda, I sent you an email that Waterloo Housing Trust Fund, they approved us for a $5,000 grant. This is for habability and helping with the ramps for the handicap accessible, so we do have that grant to help us. We have completed, our, our volunteer staff has completed three ramps so far for veterans or their spouses. And what we've noticed though is because of COVID is that the price of the materials like the wood, it almost doubled since last year. So roughly it's about $1,400, last year was like $1,400 per ramp and what we're finding out this year is about $2,500 per ramp in that standpoint. So this $5,000 will help. We're pursuing other donations to try to get that, because it looks like this program is off and running with three already done this year and we have one more request coming. So I just wanted to give you that tidbit and let you know we're still plugging along here, serving our veterans in the best way we can and, and then trying to enjoy it without, you know, getting burnt out and we had that discussion, because you can't take this job home, especially when it, when it comes to helping out the veterans who, who are suffering through whatever is Agent Orange or whatever and then you, you end up going to their funeral a week later in that standpoint. So this job does rub on you a little bit, but I'm just trying to keep our staff motivated as we look forward to this summer. Standby, dress, any questions or concerns?
All right, thank you. Any others? Item number five, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April 13th, 2021, it should say.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The minutes are approved. Consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Dralka?
Yes.
Item 7A, a motion that the personnel requisition for an office specialist, full-time replacement in the county treasurer's office.
Second.
Be approved as recommended by Rita Schmidt, County Treasurer. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or any questions for Rita? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It is approved. Item 7B, a resolution that the suspension requested by Rose Byer on taxes owed for the 2018 assessment year of taxes in the amount of $3,072 and 2019 assessment year of taxes in the amount of $3,038 for parcel number 89133328206016. Be approved pursuant, pursuant to Iowa Code 427.8 and the county treasurer be authorized and directed to adjust her records accordingly.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Dralka?
Yes.
Item 7C is a resolution that the request for purchase of capital equipment be approved and direct the chair to sign for same to purchase a new replacement postage machine, model IS 6000 from Advanced Business Systems for $14,615 to be used in the mailroom.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions?
Sounds like we've had a lot of problems with it lately and still are having them. I don't know, James, I know you're probably in.
Yeah, so especially, especially this year, you know, we're, we're four months into the year and we've already spent a little over $600 in repairs on this thing. The repairs are trending upwards as far as costs go. We've had three repairs thus far, each time it's been down for about a week, week and a half and it just, it's, it's kind of getting to the point where it, it needs repairs frequently. It's getting to the point where it's inefficient for different departments to get mail outs and it's, it, it becomes problematic. And so what this, this new mail machine would do, it's a little bit bigger, it's gonna be able to handle the, the amount of mail that we actually put out. And I know the rep that comes in and repairs our machine quite frequently kind of makes comments saying, you know, this is really meant for a smaller organization, not really meant for the amount of mail that we put out, especially with elections and attorneys and treasurer's office. So, this, this mail machine would be, would be suitable for our needs and it would be about a week, week and a half to, to get in, so I would recommend that.
Do you know the number that we were putting out for mail and, and what this machine's supposed to, I, I know that's catching you off guard a little bit.
No, that's, that's fine, I don't have those specific numbers. I just, the, the comments that the gentleman makes is saying that there are organizations smaller than us that are using a bigger mail machine. You know, he, he's looking at the different parts and he's looking at the wheels and the tracks and he goes, it's just being worn out far, at a far greater pace than it really should be. I don't have those specific numbers for you, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Does there continue to be like a service agreement with this or any warranty or anything like that?
No, it's, this, this machine currently is, is seven years old, so it doesn't have a, a service, a service agreement. It was purchased in 2014, so we don't, we don't have anything with them currently right now.
Anything on the new one?
I don't have a good answer for you, I don't, I don't know on, on that. I think that'd be extra, if that's something that we wanna do. Granted, we have, I mean, we do have our self-insurance fund that, you know, typically we don't get these service agreements just because they are costly and that is something that we do have a separate fund for. You know, I would recommend that we probably don't use a service agreement, but again, that's something that we can have a discussion on.
You know about a warranty then? Any idea on warranty for the equipment?
No, and I don't have that form in front of me, I can get that.
I guess I'd like to think that it has some type of warranty with it, but.
I would, I would think it would, yeah.
Everything buys got warranties with it anyway.
Yeah, I would, I would assume it'd be at least a year, two years.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
James, is the current one working?
Yes, but not well. And, and I know that we had the, we had the gentleman out here to fix it, it was down for about a week and a half. He came back, he fixed one part and then he, and then when we got it up and running, our network chip is currently not working, so we can't load mail currently on it right now, we can't load postage on it right now. So, it is working, it's fine for right now until, you know, we get a new one or if we do, if we do decide to not get this mail machine and we do decide to, to hold off on it, we will need to have him come back and replace our network chip. And, and again, he did, he did make a few comments saying that these, these parts are getting worn down very, very quickly. So, it is working, but not for, not for much longer unless we decide to fix it.
Might go on to research, see if it's worth anything, put it online, auction line, as is.
Rita? Did you want to?
I want to comment that we were a week down and we had a load of mail, it took about hour and a half with two gallons working on the machine when it did get fixed. We were getting calls from individuals saying, where's our registrations, where's our plates, they're going on vacation. It's, I'm, I'm really for getting a bigger, better machine because this other one's been down too much for the volume of mail that we got.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Dralka?
Yes.
It is approved. Item 7D, discussion, possible board action to discuss possible addition of occupancy sensors to three county outshops. We received two bids from Community Electric and Blackhawk Electric. One was for $46,060, the other was for $10,870. Kathy?
The bid from Community was $4,660.
Okay.
So, this is an unbudgeted item and I wanted to have a brief discussion this morning. This, the reason I'm requesting this is due to the fact that we did have an accident in one of our shops in, in early February that caught, and looking back at the accident and, you know, going over what we could have done to prevent it or prevent future accidents similar to this, many of us felt that having lighting be available in the shops would be a big asset. Currently, our shops do not have occupancy sensors. An occupancy sensor, of course, turns on automatically when it senses motion. For example, when someone steps into the shops, the shop portion of the building, or someone opens the door and backs into the, the garages, these occupancy sensors would go on. We did install occupancy sensors in our brand new Gibberville shop and we also have occupancy sensors in our, the Longfellow shop when we did the LED upgrade three or four years ago. They, we felt that they would save us money because lights would not be left on unnecessarily all day long or all night long, whatever the case. So we do have three shops that currently do not have these sensors and in thinking about the Elk Run shop, we wanted to get these into the shops if possible and also in Hudson and LaPorte at the same time if that's doable. Like I said, this is an unbudgeted item. We did solicit bids from Community Electric and Blackhawk Electric, we've worked with both of them many years. Primarily, the differences in the bids are the number of sensors that they would be installing in each shop. Blackhawk, of course, has more sensors to light the same area. Our experience tells us that we can probably get by with fewer number of sensors just based on what we've seen in the LED upgrade at the Longfellow facility. For those of you that are in the room, I did, I'm sorry, Tom, I didn't get a chance to email this to you, I did email, I do have our budget information, our capital request for FY '21 here, and I just wanted to briefly go over that. To date, we have, we do have approximately $80,000 of, of money that has not been spent in our capital FY '21 line item. The one item that would, I would still like to purchase has been, is the copier and I think I've been telling you that we are, I'm still, I'm holding back on that in wanting to purchase that late, late in the year, in May probably, for a copier, so that, that is budgeted at $12,000. Two items that we do not want to purchase that we have budgeted for would be the brine storage tanks at $10,000 and the mulch head at $35,000. The storage tanks were just not moving as fast as we, I believe, we anticipated a year and a half ago, moving in the direction of getting brine on our trucks. It's just not, we have many obstacles to overcome before we can be more like the DOT where we would be able to reload our, our dump trucks, our snowplows with brine. We're just not moving fast enough where we're going to be able to utilize those storage, the brine storage tanks in the next several years, so we've decided to not purchase, make that purchase at this time. The mulch head, we've, we've decided that at this point, we do not want to purchase that. We, again, we deferred these items over this fiscal year just due to our finances being more uncertain than they have been in other years due to COVID. We started looking at this item several months ago and decided that if, this is an item that is readily available to rent. There are several rental equipments that do have these mulching forestry heads and we would be able to rent one and we feel that that is more cost effective than actually purchasing the mulching head. The other three items on the sheet would be the three items in red, those were unbudgeted items, but over the, over this fiscal year, I've explained why we've had to buy heaters in Hudson and a garage door that wasn't budgeted at the LaPorte shop due to a windstorm last And then finally here are the occupancy sensors at, at the bottom here. So, with all of that included, our unspent money in FY '21 remains at about $80,000. Can I answer any questions?
You mentioned Kathy, these motion sensors, will they, like when the garage doors open then, you said not needing as many as maybe what the one vendor had, had provided. I assume that might have been to cover the entire shop or something like that or, or not? Or the sensors, I guess for the most part, are when the garage doors go up, that a light goes on?
No, they're, they're in our shops and they sense any motion in the shops. So it can be a truck backing in, it can be a person walking into that, that darkened room, the shop being the room, so it, it senses any motion and we've seen, for example, our north shed, we have them in the corners at the shops, in the shop building and just looking at square footages of what's been done at Longfellow and what our current shops are, we feel that the, the, the Community Electric bid should be, provide adequate number of sensors.
Why do we back our trucks in?
I think because we've always done that, that we're able to.
Apparently it's a safety hazard. If you had an accident, I'd be looking at changing it to pulling them in the way people pull their cars in grudges, not backing them in.
So I, I think we feel that we're safer backing into the building than possibly backing out of the buildings. Maybe, it's probably easier maybe to do maintenance on the, the trucks as they're, when they're in the backed in position. I, I don't really know those, that question.
And why do you feel you can hold up on the copier? You know, you're saying you're gonna get it, but you're gonna wait until May, why not get it now? Prices keep going up on everything, we've talked about this before.
So, Carol has, we've investigated that, I felt that.
Who's we?
The office staff and I.
Okay.
We've, uh, looked into that. We did get an estimate for a copier. We feel that, that they will honor that, that price. We're, I'm still wiping down the copier every night, but apparently now new guidance from CDC says we probably don't need to be wiping down hard surfaces. So that was really the reason of, of waiting. I didn't want to be wiping down a brand new copier with hand sanitizer every, every evening or, you know, very, very frequently. So that's why we've deferred that purchase until now.
Tom?
Kathy, is there a reason why this wasn't included in your FY21 budget, especially when you had it in the other, um, garages for, well, the LED light project was at least a year or two ago?
Yeah, it was three or four years ago. I don't.
Was there a reason why it wasn't added in the FY21?
No, we just, I don't have a good reason. We just didn't think about including it. It's one of those small items that we just didn't think about including in the budget.
Safety should be one of your first things you look at.
And the information you said you passed out today, something?
Yeah.
Yes, it's, uh, it's a copy of the FY21 capital items.
It'd be helpful in the future maybe to get that out prior to the meetings so the supervisor can study it with the finance director rather than the day of the meeting. Maybe with the email that you sent accompanying it with that.
Sure. Yes, and is for your information, Tom, it is just the capital equipment improvements request form that we've all received. It was just highlighting those items that she was, um, outlining on her budget for the unbudgeted stuff, so. But I agree, it's always helpful to have the information beforehand. Well, I, I know, it sounds like in the last few sessions, we've been talking about everybody kind of front-loading budget item, budget requests and, and making, you know, those items all purchased in July or whatever or the early months. And I don't think that's probably logical from us, um, to add, make that request. I know that's, would mean we'd have nothing, um, to look at or evaluate budgets as we go on through the year in case we don't have money or we'd have emergencies and that type of thing. So, um, and I know last year, to be quite honest, um, because of the COVID situation, we asked all of our departments to take a look at those expense items and kind of hold off on those because we didn't know how our revenue was going to look. So on that end, I said, I'm, I'm pleased that our revenue wasn't impacted negatively and we are able to go ahead and do these types of things, but for the most part, a safety issue, I agree with Craig. I said, I think we always need to look at some of those things that are safety issues and how we can be safer and, and, um, not endanger our staff or our equipment and buildings and that type of thing. So I think, um, it's something that, I like the fact that also than the two bids we have, it's at less than $5,000 to make these safety changes. And I know Craig, when you mentioned backing bill, um, equipment into buildings, I know that's not easy.
Probably more damage done than the $4,600 probably to that truck by backing in, like I said, but that's falling on death figures apparently.
No, but something that's a prevention that we can take for going forward. So I, I appreciate.
I think it'd be a lot safer to pull, uh, pull them in forward and back out of the shed than it would be to back into the shed.
Well, I can certainly.
Just common sense.
Yeah.
Or put a door on the other end so they can drive out.
Well, that'd be great. I think, yeah, to drive straight through does sound like a.
Yeah, that way we could, we wouldn't have any accidents.
But can't always occur.
What the, why a person, any common sense if, when you open the door, the first thing I do is look in the garage, make sure everything's out of the way.
Yeah, but they.
I just don't back in.
No, and I know.
Or pull in. I make sure everything's out of the way.
But it is in the middle of the winter. Most of the time when this occurs, when it's dark in the morning, dark in the evening. So it's not like there's.
That's what you got lights on your car for, so you can see in the garage. Or that's what you got the garage door. When it opens, there's a light on in the garage.
Yeah, well, they're not all as easy solutions as they are with us and our cars.
They're simple solutions.
Well, maybe we should install big doors that drive through then. I'm, I'm sure that cost would be very.
I'm, I just use that as an example.
Well, but I mean, that might be a good solution.
That would be out of the question. I would never pay for that.
Any other comments?
That would be a complete remodel.
Questions for Kathy?
Can we have a roll call on this, please?
Yep.
Yes, we will.
Yep, you bet.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll, I'll offer a motion to approve the bid from Community Electric to install occupancy sensors in the Elgron shop, Hudson shop and LaPorte City shop for a total of $4,660.
I'll second it.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
No.
Jelka?
Yes.
Item 7E is discussion in regard to county preparedness and possible updates for COVID-19. Anybody, anybody with an update on COVID-19? We had several items of significance already. The, uh, the clinic is good. I'm encouraged to see that. Any others?
It worries me that nobody's taking the shots right now.
And there is a push to get more people vaccinated.
Right. You can push all you want. My son stopped over last night and he's not going to get it.
So we are, efforts are being made to, uh, market the benefits of the vaccination. Ultimately, it is a personal choice, but, uh, I know many people are trying to encourage people to get it.
Yeah, no, I think we just have to keep having, we all come across people that are reluctant and just keep having those difficult conversations with them. Um, you can't, can't shame them into it. That doesn't work for people, but just, just being the example and just trying to push them in the right direction and reminding them that it's not just about you, it's about the whole community. And that's why we're doing this.
I would suspect the very high percentage of courthouses are already vaccinated.
Well, we should see numbers on it, I would imagine. That might be interesting.
Yes, yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Anybody have anything before adjournment? Uh, any, anything else from the board? Oh, we have the closed session. Yes.
We can adjourn, I guess, but.
All right, uh, item number nine is a resolution that pursuant to the provisions of Iowa Open Meetings Law, the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors shall proceed into closed session to discuss courthouse security and to discuss information contained in records in the custody of a governmental body that are confidential records pursuant to section 22.7, paragraph 50 in Iowa Code 21.5, paragraph K.
So moved.
Second?
What'd you say, Ken?
Well, I'm still getting people off, so don't stir.
We're just.
Okay, sorry.
Going into it.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yep.
Leyland?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
All right, uh, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed say no. We are adjourned.